The December 7, 2017 meeting of the City of Scranton zoning hearing board will now come to order. Will the Secretary please take role?
Mr. Walsh?
Here.
Mr. Gattins?
Here.
Ms. Newcomb?
Here.
Mr. Marks?
Here.
Chairman O'Neill?
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) In accordance with Pennsylvania State's law, this board shall render its decision on each case either at the end of each hearing or within forty-five days of the hearing. If you are given testimony in a case, please come to the podium, raise your right hand, and wait to be sworn in. After being sworn in, state your name and address and proceed with your testimony. Also, anyone given testimony who does not become a party to the case may obtain a written decision from the zoning office. I also have two announcements of law. If you are granted a variance or a special exception, you must wait thirty days from the date of our decision to obtain the necessary permits to start work. However, you may obtain permits sooner by signing a waiver that any work done during the thirty-day period is at your own risk. A favorable decision by the zoning board shall expire twelve months from the date of said authorization. In accordance with 111 of the zoning ordinance, if you fail to obtain the necessary permits or do not comply with any or all conditions of said authorization, you must seek a special exemption. Remarks?
Yes, I have a couple. First, I want to express the importance of having your paperwork on the day that it's due for parking plans and any other blueprints that might be, that we might need to see because going to the properties that we have to go to, we need a picture. And without a picture or a parking plan, we don't know what we're looking at. So it is very important, and sometimes there are extenuating circumstances, which I understand, but for the most part, a month, I think, according to this sheet we just got, people have a month to submit their application. And nine out of ten times, it's not being done accurately. My second thing is, Jack, that we talked about earlier, the daycare, 1305 Washburn Street, they filed a continuance and, because they didn't have parking, they were going to come back for parking. You said they bought a lot. That's great. The lot meets, never came before us for a variance because they need a variance to make it a parking lot, and it's still sitting there vacant and the...
No, they came to us.
They did.
When did they come to us for the parking lot?
You weren't here.
Oh, so they did come, but it's still not paved, and they're still operating their daycare with no parking lot.
No, it was approved.
I'm sorry?
It's still, it's still completely grassed, they're still operating their daycare, and they have no parking, and they are causing severe traffic problems.
Well, I'll go over tomorrow, and I'll speak to them, I'll check it out and see what we approved, and report back.
Yes, I just, because that's a huge violation of the...
But it definitely was the lot across the street.
Yeah, I must have missed the meeting where that happened, but they're not, it's been...
And it was supposed to be paved. I don't know if there was a timeframe involved, but I'll check.
Jack, if I'm not mistaken, I think we allowed them to wait till the spring to pave it because of the time, but they were supposed to, up until that point, though, was grade it down and make it suitable for parking now.
Again, I'll check what we approved and go over tomorrow and speak to them.
Thank you.
Test the postings, Jack?
Yes. Hi, Jack Sweeney, zoning officer for the City of Scranton. Do solemnly swear that I posted the following premises with a notice of zoning hearing. Number one, Mobileite, US Route 1, PA Route 307 on Jefferson Avenue. Number two, Good Old Things, I'm sorry, Old Good Things, 1007 Quincy Avenue. Number three, Antonio Hernandez, 201 Prospect Avenue. And number four, New Singular Wireless LLC, 1511 Pittston Avenue. Properties were posted on December 11th, I'm sorry, December 1st.
Okay, first case, please.
Number one, Mobileite LLC, Joel Fitzsimmons.
Okay, raise your right hand. I solemnly swear the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you, God.
I do.
State your name and address, please.
Joseph Fitzsimmons, F-I-T-Z-S-I-M-M-O-N-S, 111 Church Street, Waverly, Pennsylvania, 18471.
Okay, you can proceed.
First, I'd like to thank you for your time and consideration tonight. Secondly, I'd like to extend happy, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and Happy Holidays to everybody. And I'm here on behalf of Mobility. We're seeking a variance to install a 30.7-inch-high-by-4.7-inch-diameter antenna and associated equipment on a light pole on Jefferson Avenue to provide data services to the general public.
I assume these are the same types of towers that have come forth in the past?
These are, it's the same installation that we've received approval for in the past, yes.
So we could just, could we just jump to it if...
Well, I just want to...
Shot out a question from last time.
How many of these towers are you, because month after month, you keep coming back with more and more and more?
This is the last one that I have, as far as I know. We just picked up ten building permits in the last week or two to start construction, probably in the first quarter.
Anybody else have any question? Is there anyone else here to give testimony today?
Well, then I'll make a motion. I made the motion.
Second.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Gattins?
Yes.
Ms. Newcomb?
Yes.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Chairman O'Neill?
Yes, with a vote five to zero, it's been passed.
Thank you.
Next case?
Number two, Old Good Things, 1007 Quincy Avenue. Mr. Mendola.
When I raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Okay, state your name and address, please.
Robert Mendola, professional land surveyor, representing Old Good Things. I believe you have a copy of the plans before you. We're looking at a multi-unit dwelling at 1007 Quincy Avenue. As of the moment, the building is inhabitable. Years back, it was a seven-unit apartment, and our people are trying to look at this, trying to bring it back to livable conditions and put it back in the tax roll. And we're looking at four units rather than the seven that were previously there. Zoning requires one and a half parking per dwelling, so that would be six required. As you look at my drawing, that's an actual survey showing the size of the lot, the exact location of the structure, and then in the rear off of the Hitchcock Court, you have, I show four parking. There's no way I can get six designed in there, and I wouldn't stuff it in place and make it something that would just be creative and not functional. So we're looking at the four, so that would mean that we're looking for a relief of two parking for this application.
How many bedrooms are going to be in each unit now?
Two-bedroom each apartment.
What will be the configuration of them? Three floors, right?
There are, and I don't know the exact layout. As a surveyor, I'm just doing the outside survey, but I just locate the structure, and I'm sure they're going to be laid out in a safe and a comfortable manner with two bedrooms for each apartment. More than enough room for what it used to be used for, for that size building, so it's going to be a comfortable fit.
Anyone else here to give testimony? Anyone in opposition of it? Okay, sir, if you want to stand up, come to the podium. Okay, raise your right hand, sir. Do solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes, I do.
Okay, state your name and address, please.
Tom Irving, 1032 Quincy Avenue, Scranton, PA, 18510. I object to this because of the parking. Quincy Avenue is, there's no parking. Additional is going to be hardship for the neighborhood. That's all I have to say.
I can ask you a question before you walk away. I mean, they were here last time with seven, and the board did vote it down. If we don't give them four, what use would that building be besides sitting vacant?
Well, it's been condemned.
But it's still going to sit there for a long time before the city takes action on that. You know it, and I know it. I mean, it can be condemned for ten years. I've seen it happen.
Well...
But I mean, is there another use, or something that the neighbors would be ready to accept at that point?
As of right now, they're not. Like I said, there's no parking.
Last time, you had a full contingent here, and it seems like you're the only one that came this time, if I'm not mistaken.
There are some, some people here.
Okay. No, I'm just concerned that if, just say, it didn't get approved tonight, that building's going to sit there, and I'm sure eventually that the developer will walk away with his hands up in the air, and you're going to be left with a building that's vacant and there for a while. So I'm just trying to come to a middle-of-the-road agreement here.
Well, they could configure the apartments differently so they'd have enough parking, that's what I...
Well, I mean, the gentleman that did it is, I'll say, top of the line in his era when it comes to that stuff, so I mean, I'm sure if he could have got six in there, he would have got six in there.
I'm not talking about the park, I'm talking about fewer apartments.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mendola, did he look to find parking elsewhere besides what's on the property to see if he can make up these spots that they're short?
I studied the entire block in doing the survey. As the gentleman mentioned, I understand what he's saying, there's no parking on Quincy, but we're, we're giving the best shot for the property layout and the house layout. And with respect to the entire block, we're going into the rear and having four parking. And I'll be honest with you, and I respect the neighbors' concerns as anyone, but I don't think even back in time, the seven units had parking in the rear parking like I'm showing. So at that particular time, that would add to the congestion on Quincy because nobody was parking in the rear. So who was ever living there for seven units were stealing spots on Quincy. We're taking relief of that, and we're taking the four and putting them in the rear. That's something we didn't have before. So I, like you said, Mr. Gattins, it's our best fit for the conditions that prevail. These people are gracious enough to put a lot of money back into that structure to make it habitable, get it back in the tax rolls for the city and for taxes. And yeah, I understand there's a lot of concerns in the Hill section and areas in that matter, I understand that, but I think for our circumstances, we have the best shot for the four parking, and we're only going with four units rather than the seven, so I don't know what other else we can do to compromise.
Did you, did you look into it all, having the cars parked diagonally up against the left side?
That's a good point, Mrs. Newcomb, I did that. Would you believe this? People think in a rectangular or square lot, if you park diagonal, you get more cars? You get less because of the angle, and then they have to back out at angles to come into the center of the, of the lot to get out into the alley. If you have them perpendicular, they go bingo, and they just back right up. But that's a good point.
Is that, is that wall staying there, or will that, that wall, there's like a half-wall, will that be...
That wall could be modified, and there's another point of interest you say about the parking diagonal. If you wanted to get creative and even practical, you have a lot of depth there from the court to the back of the structure. So if you want to get fancy and probably get maybe a little bit more of a, getting more parking, you might get one more, but I'd rather do things safer, comfortable, and not stuff things in and make it unsafe. And the four units was the best I could do with that. But that's a good point with diagonal parking, I appreciate that.
I have another question. I'm not sure you can answer this question, Mr. Mendola. Last time you were here, if I'm not mistaken, the testimony was that they were going to rent it to medical students possibly, if I remember correctly? Or, I mean, are we looking at, is it going to be families it's going to be rented to, or is it students of, say, the medical school? Or, I mean, I don't know what their earmark is for what they're doing.
In fairness to your questions, I don't know the complete details of the function of, I know that there's two-bedroom apartments. I don't know if there's anybody here that would lend to that, are they just typical...
I don't know if Mr. Russo wants to come and speak.
Just a typical, normal, two-bedroom apartment. And in fairness, it could be, it could be rented out to anybody on a first-come, first-saved basis based on the allotted cost for the rental.
Are these four apartments going to take up the entire space of the building, or is there going to be any, any space vacant? Or, do you know what I mean? Is the entire building going to be utilized for these four apartments?
I believe that the layout of the house with the three structures, stories, as Mr. Gattins mentioned, I think they're going to lay out these four, because you have so much area, in a, in a way or a layout that would be conducive to giving the most comfort to each apartment. So these are, I would believe, larger than normal apartments for that use because there used to be seven, and now we're going to make four, so I think it's going to be a very comfortable design, and I think it's going to work out well for, for the people that are going to put money into the structure as well as people living there.
I just, I don't know if I'm missing something here or not, but we're not going to be renting rooms out individually, are we here, with the common areas, the kitchen and bathroom here?
No.
I'm just asking a question. I have a right to ask a question, Ms...
No.
Okay.
There's no one else here to give testimony?
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Gattins?
Yes.
Ms. Newcomb?
Yes.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Chairman O'Neill?
Yes, with a vote five to zero, it's been granted.
Thank you very much, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, everyone.
Same to you. Next case, please.
Agenda item number three, Antonio Hernandez, 201 Prospect Avenue.
Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
State your name and address, please.
Antonio Hernandez, 1511 Cedar Ave.
Okay, you can proceed.
We are asking for permission to open up a grocery store at 201, excuse me, at Prospect Ave, but the only problem is that there isn't any parking, and there is no resolution. We couldn't find a resolution to build parking around it.
So as it stands right now, there's no parking offered at the store?
No, not four, there's no here.
And, I'll be honest, I have a problem with that because you're, where it sits, I mean, it hasn't been a store in that building for, as far as a grocery store, for well over thirty years. And it's a congested neighborhood. If you go there at night, the parking is congested. And I'm concerned that the spillover is going to affect the neighborhood. You're applying it as a hardship, and my concern is that if we grant this to you to eliminate your hardship, we take the hardship and put it back into the neighborhood there.
Yeah.
And I have a little bit of a problem with this. I know you made an attempt to look at parking, like a satellite parking lot that eventually turned out to be too far away. Is there another use you can do for that storefront, as an office or something?
Well, we were aiming for a grocery store, but if it comes down, we were thinking of an office area for somebody.
How about even, what is the square footage of that, that space?
I don't even have, I don't even know off the top of my head, but it's a very large area.
Jack, would he even be allowed to put another apartment in that unit instead of a storefront, or no?
Of course. I think at the last hearing, which would have been in October, there was testimony that there would be eight hundred square feet open to the public for the grocery store, so with the storage, it'd be more than eight hundred feet, square feet, and I think we require six hundred for an apartment.
Which, which he lacks parking for as well.
Yeah.
Yep.
In your other stores, and I know you can't produce numbers, but can you ballpark how many of your clients are walking in from the street versus driving to your store?
And the one in South Side, it's probably two to ten, like two people come in for every ten people that bring in vehicles. And the one over by the high school, that one is more people walking in with their, walking off the street, because most of our, a lot of our customers are the kids that come out of school, or people who are from the gym that are next door. That one's kind of, I guess, balanced out, the same amount of people that come in walking, coming with one vehicle at a time.
Where are, where are these other locations?
One of them is on the 1500 block of Cedar Ave, where Brown's Restaurant used to be across the street from the new bar, I believe, down the street from Jata. And the other one is across the street from the V-Spot, across from Gladiator Diner, old Atlas Glass.
Is where?
By the, across the street from the V-Spot, the bar and...
Oh, I know, okay.
Old Diamond Cave, I think.
Catty cornered, it's by the glider, okay.
Yeah, across the street from the glider, yeah.
So the store you guys would be operating yourselves, is, are you looking to rent it out, or are you...
No, for ourselves, yeah.
I have to say that we did discuss with the DPW about the possibility of a ten-minute sign where the, in front of the store, to try to alleviate any long-term parking issues.
Was that possible?
Yes, of course, yes. And Mr. Antonio indicated that that would be okay with him as well, right?
Mm-hmm.
That was the only solution in terms of the parking that we could come up with.
With the police department, or whoever might be notifying these departments?
It would be legitimate, yeah, it would be on their list, so it would be enforceable.
Okay.
But you'd only allow for one spot at that point, because you'd need fifteen feet from the stop sign as a no-parking zone, so you're...
And again, that would be up to the DPW. We originally talked about two signs, actually.
Jack, what was that storefront before he bought it?
Well, it's been empty for so long, I believe that was...
The last visible sign that was on there was the magistrate's building.
Yeah, I was going to say, the last I remember was magistrate, Russell's office was there.
The last, I'll say, grocery store was Mattson's in there, and that, at least thirty, forty years ago, since they left there, and then it was a magistrate's office, two magistrates and two, and then it's been vacant for at least fifteen years now.
Yeah, he indicated, and I'm not trying to speak, but we did discuss another apartment. We did discuss office space, which would may require less parking and less congestion.
I speak for myself and not the rest of the board, I'd be happier to see it go to an office rather than, as opposed to a store, because as we know, these, these small stores are popular, and good for them, and good for you with your other two stores, and it just brings the congestion into that neighborhood. And again, I'm going to state that if we allow this hardship, we take the hardship off of the gentleman that bought it, and we pass it on to the neighbors.
Yeah, that's understandable. Because, I mean, we've also, I've had to sign up for rent, but, I mean, a lot of them have been mostly for offices for people who want to open up an office, but I said I had to come here before I can do anything. But I mean, if I can get permission for an office, I'd rather have, give it, give it to somebody else who can rent it out as an office. And at a grocery, like you said, it would be less of a hassle, that'd be office hours, which is from like eight to four, five, nine to five, and then that eliminates the evening traffic.
Can I have a show of hands, who's here for opposition for this? Okay, if you guys would like to come up and speak in front of everybody? Okay, if you want to raise your right hand? And do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Okay, state your name and address, please.
My name is Kathleen Madzen. I live at 102 Watchers Drive in Scranton, 18505, and I'm the vice president of the South Side Neighborhood Association, so that's why I'm here today.
Okay, now, if they decided to do some sort of office, would that be...
Are you also, are you also speaking on behalf of...
I'm speaking on behalf of our group.
Okay.
And our, the other neighbors that have contacted.
My question is for you and everybody that represent, if he decided to do an office opposed to the grocery store, is that a better choice for, for you guys, or...
Yes, it would be a better choice. Our main concern is that's a really, and we're not against, we are pro-business, pro-development. We want South Side revitalized, but certain things fit in certain places.
Sure, that's why I was asking that, because I'm...
And we're not against you doing this. But the store generates a lot of traffic. We already have one on Pittston Avenue and Orchard, we have Madzen's down on, which I'm not related to, it's sold, down on, further down on Prospect, and then on Music Street, there's a store. And the traffic gets a little congested. So if, and it's kind of, the property itself is landlocked, so because of the old laws and how you could build, the parking requirements are really kind of strangling a lot of development. So you have to fit it into something less busy if you have less spaces. So something like an office would most likely be acceptable to our neighbors in that area.
Would there be anybody in the audience that would give opposition to an office?
Yeah, we...
Jack, we could vote on an office, right, or no?
Well, if I might add...
No, okay, go ahead.
If I might add, there's two apartments in that building already. There's two storefronts in that building. There is only off-street parking, is a one-car driveway and a garage behind it. On the other side of the building, it's literally right up against Eleanor's house, and her driveway is right there. So the corner is really short and small, so depending on what you are putting in there, you really have to think about the, the parking of it. Because, I mean, there is space around there, but there's houses around there... Because, I mean, there is space around there, but there's houses around there, there's neighbors right there, so you have to kind of make sure you know what you're putting, you're going to allow in there.
Right, well, that's why I'm trying to come up with a resolution for everybody and not have him keep coming back over and over.
Well, I, I think unfortunately, you're going to have to find a tenant and then come back to us with a tenant, because we have to know what we're voting on and what kind of tenant you want to put in there.
I feel the same way. I'm not comfortable voting tonight for an office when we don't know what business is in that office.
I, I agree.
How many employees are anything.
Um, are those apartments you mentioned two, you said, are they vacant or?
No, they actually have people living upstairs.
So, oh, so they're occupied?
Yeah.
Okay. So they're street parking?
The, the, in the little driveway they have, they fit both their vehicles to.
Oh, is that the driveway that's directly behind the, the store on the cross-street side?
Well, Jack, this building is not condemned, correct?
No.
No.
So, so, so what would he be a- able to put in there?
R2.
Well, because it was never condemned, he could put whatever was in there before.
It's R2.
It's R2, so anything that's an R2 use.
Yeah.
So this application here, though, is for, to open a grocery store, not to open an office, so he would have to, he would have to file a continuance again.
Dan might have an idea.
Well, here's what, here's what I'm saying. He won't have to come back if he meets the criteria for what it was. The building was never condemned, so he doesn't have to come back in front of this, this board.
But it's been.
It would have to be an R2 use for him not to have to come back.
Anything other than that, he would have to come back.
Anything other than an R2 use, he would have to come back.
And what's the, the list on that, like this example for him?
Offices is not one of them.
So he would have to come back for the office.
Oh, but that's what I'm trying to help him out here. What's the, the, the list, the criteria for?
Aside from another apartment.
Aside, aside from residential uses, which would be another apartment. There would be.
Anything else he would have to come back.
But, but here's the thing that I, I don't understand, if, if it was never condemned, then why can't he just put someone in there right now if there's not?
Because it's, it's been vacant for more than six months.
Then it would.
Which reverses it back to an R2 use.
Oh, okay, okay, all right. All right, well, I was trying to save you a step, but it looks like.
It looks like, uh, your neighbors would be okay with an office. I, I just recommend you find, uh, a good tenant.
Yeah, and I, I did have people who wanted an office. There were the kind of office where people go to look for a job agency. There's a lot of people that, there's like three people that came from New York saying that they wanted a space for a job agency so, so people can come in and give people jobs. I guess that's, that's really like the office people that have called me up saying that's exactly what they wanted to do.
Well, why don't you see if you can get them as a tenant and then present it to us maybe the following month, you know?
Yeah, I suggest a continuance again.
Yeah, that's what I.
Continuance again, then.
I'll make a motion for a continuance.
Well, let's, let's back up a little bit. Um, hi- his application is for a retail grocery store. In order to amend that app, to keep this case alive, he would have to amend the application for an office. So he would have to agree to amend it to an office, the neighbors would have to agree to allow him to amend it to an office, and you guys would have to approve the amendment to an office use. And then you can grant the continuance for him to come back as, as asking for an office.
So what I said before then was true, he was going to have to change his whole application in, in order for it to?
Yeah, I mean, we, we can do that on the record now.
Okay.
And just, just for, just for clarity, um, it, no matter what he puts in there off, so he'll still have to come before the board again?
Yes, because we're not voting on whether.
Correct, that's, I just want to make sure.
We're ju- we're just voting on his, allowing him to amend the application for an office.
Right, I just want to make sure the neighbors understand that.
Then he'll have to come back and make a presentation as to what type of office he's, he's asking for.
Very good.
And I have a question just for our own benefit. So if there was, let's just say, four storefronts or four storefronts and two apartments, and one storefront was not rented for two years but always maintained, always, you have to come back again for, for that, okay?
Yeah, we've had that plenty of times.
So I'll make a motion on?
Well, let's, let's start first.
Okay.
Mr. Hernandez, would you be willing to amend your application to ask for a, an office instead of a, a grocery store?
Yes.
And Ms. Madzen, would you allow Mr. Hernandez to amend to his application for an office instead of a grocery store?
Yes.
Okay, and now the board, you have to vote to allow, uh, allow the amendment.
Amendment, okay. Well, I'll make the motion for the amendment.
Second.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Gattins?
Yes.
Ms. Newcomb?
Yes.
Mr. Marx?
Yes.
Chairman O'Neill?
Yes, with the vote five to zero, it's been amended.
And now we have to make a motion for a continuance or?
Yes.
I'll make a motion for the continuance.
I'll second it.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Gattins?
Yes.
Ms. Newcomb?
Yes.
Mr. Marx?
Yes.
Chairman O'Neill?
Yes, with the vote five to zero, it's been continued.
Thank you.
Next case, please.
Case number four, New Singular Wireless LLC, 1511 Pittston Avenue.
What's that?
Yeah. Good idea. He's been very, uh.
Since everything's.
Yeah, he was very clever, so he wasn't a smart ass.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh, raise your right hand.
I'm actually the attorney for it. So Kate Durso, uh, the attorney for the applicant New Singular Wireless. Um, I have some exhibits that are required by your ordinance if I can just present them, and then I can do an offer of proof or I can have the witnesses testify, whatever you prefer. The offer of proof might speed things up.
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay. So essentially, New Singular Wireless is requesting approval to place antennas within the existing church steeple and then to place an equipment shelter or cabinet, excuse me, at the base of the church structure. Um, included in the exhibit package is a copy of all the FCC licenses authorizing New Singular Wireless to provide, uh, wireless services to Lackawanna County and the surrounding area. There's also, uh, for standing purposes, a copy of the redacted lease for the city's files. The plan was previously submitted, there's just a reduced size copy in the package. Um, Exhibit Four is a photo simulation that was submitted with the application materials showing that from a ground, uh, perspective, the antennas will be disguised within the, uh, steeple structure. Exhibit Five in the package is the, uh, structural analysis confirming that analysis was done to confirm that by attaching those antennas inside the steeple, it would not adversely impact the structural integrity of the church steeple or the church building.
Excuse me one second, did you say there was already existing? Did you say there was existing?
There is, there are no exist, we would be proposing antennas in the existing steeple. There is no wireless equipment there, there now. Um, the photo simulation was, was done to show, uh, because of the type of stealthing material that would be used, it, they're designed to blend into the steeple structure, so the antennas would not be visible, um, from the ground or the surrounding area. Um, Exhibit Six in the package is showing basically from a design perspective that there is a, uh, need for coverage in the general vicinity of the proposed site. Uh, Exhibit Seven shows that if we do, uh, provide the antennas at the proposed height elevation at the proposed location, that the coverage objective would be satisfied. Uh, Exhibit Eight is the required affidavit confirming no interference, uh, should the antennas be operational. Uh, Exhibit Nine is an analysis that was done to confirm that the operation of the antennas would be in accordance with the EMF FCC exposure limitations of the FCC. And Exhibit Ten was the analysis to confirm that by attaching the antennas within the steeple, that there wouldn't be any requirement from an FAA standpoint to put any lighting on the outside structure of the steeple. The steeple itself, the church building to the top of the highest point is ninety feet seven inches tall. The antennas would be sort of within the center line of the steeple, so it's about a seventy-five foot, uh, elevation, so the antennas would not extend above the height of the existing structure. And the equipment on the ground would be essentially a six-foot-eight-inch by six-foot-eight-inch walk-in cabinet mounted on a steel frame, there'd be a generator associated with it and it would be surrounded with a chain link fence. Um, what happens is the equipment then gets connected to the antennas on the roof, there'll be cabling that would go up the side of the building, the cabling would be a color to match the side of the church structure so that you wouldn't see the cabling going up the side.
Where's, where's this wall going?
I'm sorry?
Where is this going to be?
At, at the church?
Yeah.
Steentown, Steentown Church.
No, no, where's, where's the, um, the wall that's going to surround the pole going to be?
There's no wall around the pole.
Or where's the pole going to be?
There is no pole. There's antennas that are mounted in the.
No, you said there's a six-foot by.
That's, that's the equipment cabinet that's on the ground.
Yes, that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking, where's that going?
So if you look at the plan in Exhibit Three, there's currently a sidewalk area.
It's Exhibit Three, page three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's currently a sidewalk area that would be bumped out around, and it's on the side of the church, uh, away from Fig Street, adjacent to where there's an existing building.
So that basically will be hidden also. You won't be able to see it coming up Pittston Avenue, but you'll be able to see it coming down Pittston Avenue.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you, if, if you're looking for it in between the building structures, yes. I mean, it's certainly not disguised as well as the antennas, because of the antennas being internal to the church structure. Um, but yes, I mean, given how those properties are situated and.
Oh, yeah, we, we, we understand cell phone towers, we've had plenty of them coming before, before us.
I figured.
I just wanted to know the location, that's all.
Sure.
There, there's no noise of being emitted from that box, that control box, like fans running or anything like that?
So, um, the, the, the generator itself is tested, um, but it's tested usually on a monthly basis and then, because you want to make sure that obviously that it's operational. So the, the only real noise that would come is, is essentially related to more of the generator when it is being tested, because they want to make sure that it is going to be able to be used should there be a power outage. Uh, but it's, it's not, it's a typical generator that you would use at a house if there was a power outage, so that, it's that type of sound that would be generated by.
Do you know how far away that sound would reverberate, like how far it would go?
Um.
Like would a next, next door neighbor, the closest neighbor be able to hear it?
Well, the closest property line is about thirty-six feet away.
So probably not.
So I would say probably not. I mean, it, it, when it's being tested, it would, it's on for a very short period of time. Obviously, if it's operational, everybody else is experiencing the same power outage, so it would probably be multiple generators going in the area, so I can't say a hundred percent in the, in a power outage when it's being operated on a continual basis that there might be some sound emanating, but it wouldn't be any different than a residential house having an outside generator.
How close is the, the nearest home to that generator?
The nearest home?
That's the property line, but is the, is the house right there on the line?
Um, I, I don't know exactly how far off it is. I don't, I don't know the answer specifically, I just know what it is off the property line.
It's no less than thirty-six feet, that's.
Certainly, yes, yes, it's no less than thirty-six feet, yes.
Anyone else here give testimony?
Okay.
Are you finished with your, uh?
Yes, the summary.
Your spiel?
Sure, yes. I've certainly give any more that you need, but I didn't want to belabor the issue.
Okay, well, we have no, uh, no one to, um, so I'll, uh, make the motion.
I make a motion? Oh, you did? I'm sorry. I second it.
Mr. Walsh?
Unfortunately, I don't feel these, uh, need to be in residential neighborhoods, so I'm going to vote no.
Mr. Gattins?
No.
Ms. Newcomb?
Yes.
Mr. Marx?
Yes.
Chairman O'Neill?
Yes, with the vote three to, or three to two, it's been granted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, meetings adjourned.